We're going to call the regular city council meeting of Cherokee Village to order the Thursday, August 21st, 2025. If you don't mind standing with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your government, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We recognize a short moment of silence, please.
Harrison, here. Rachel Tatum, here. Thompson.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Jeff Tatum. Lo.
Here.
Ishmael.
Here.
Rowan, here. Mayor, Clerk, and Council Attorney for him established.
In looking at the agenda, tonight's agenda, before we approve it, I'd like to approve it with the addition of a new business number six would be the, you'll see in your packets there about the street department vehicles that were wanting to get surplus. The street department vehicles was wanting to get surplus, so.
I make a motion, we accept the agenda as amended.
Seconded.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve tonight's agenda with the addition of new business number six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion passes, thank you. Public comments or questions on the agenda items? We already got a minute to look over the minutes of the July 17th meeting.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as presented.
About a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rowan to approve the July 17th, 2025 minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. Motion passes. Ms. Penny, would you care to lead the correspondence?
Says, hi, my name is Sarah. Last week, while on vacation in Cherokee Village, I had the opportunity to meet one of your police officers, Officer Cody Bennett, and it could have been at a better time. I had a flat tire and was stranded on the side of the road with very spotty cell service. Officer Bennett noticed my flat tire and asked if I needed help, and I graciously accepted. He changed the tire for me and put on the spare tire and followed me to the tire shop so that I could get my tire fixed. The officer said he just got finished with court because I was worried I was keeping him from important things. He said that was nonsense because I was important. I just wanted to take a minute to thank this officer for his kindness and going above and beyond. He was so nice and comforting in the stressful and not in hot situation, and I appreciate him and his service immensely. Thank you again.
Ms. Penny.
Good job, Peter, and good job, officer.
Mr. Police Chief, just let Monty know, or let Monty let Mr. Cody know about that?
He has already got a copy of it. We'll have one back.
Thank you very much. On the financial report, our sales taxes, like I said, we're still trending, we're still trending into positive, we're plus what we was in 2004, 2024, you know, kind of online what we was in 2023 when all the repairs was being done from the hail damage. And we're doing pretty good there, still in the, still in the expected, in the expected revenue brackets. In my mayor's report, there's a couple of different things. I just wanted to remind everybody that the road construction's going on down here at the town center, the, hopefully, if you come in tonight, you seen that they've got the, they've got the fuel poured, they're standing up steel for the walls and the forums, hopefully, the hope is they're still going to be able to stay on schedule with the road closure. Right now, it's looking pretty good, but I mean, hopefully, it won't go as long as it did last time. One of the, I had a, we had a, the land owner, Mr. Rhodes, that owns the land up here off Fathead by the copper featherhead contacted me because the citizens, among other people, are using the grass as a bypass, driving through the, you know, his grass, the grass area, kind of killing the grass and turning it to dirt and all of it ever, you know. When it rains, it's going to turn it very muddy, so we've kind of moved the road close signs around to hopefully block that off to keep the traffic from not using an unapproved bypass. The police chief, he's informed his officers too to be on the lookout if they drive around the road close signs, that can be a tickleable offense, so just to let the citizens know, it's closing, and driving through the grass is not an approved bypass. We have a couple, Ms. Megan, our animal control officer, she received an award, you got to, can you read that, Ms. Penny? Got it there in front of you?
No, I gave that back to you.
Oh, and this is probably laying on my desk, but she received, she received an award from.
It was my basic experience.
Yes.
Arkansas State Animal Control Center.
Yeah, she did a very good job, and I'm proud of her, thank you.
Congratulations, Megan.
And earlier this month, Ms. Angel in the Planning and Zoning Office received an award from the state for being the recognized floodplain manager for this area. The state floodplain manager come up and they wouldn't give her an award, so I'm proud of her for that too, that's an accomplishment to get that done too, so, proud of Ms. Angel for that. On your, in your packets, in front of you, Arkansas passed Act 922 of 2025, which is the, gives the municipalities the authority to grant limited access for UTVs on public streets and highways. Our county judge, Mr. Counts, Judge Counts, passed, they passed an executive order in the county for, which includes all the unincorporated areas, so I kind of, I got a copy of what he, he put out, it's going to be, it's on the website and in front of us to kind of look at, and we can digest and decide whether to vote a senior, to pass something senior in the upcoming city council meeting. I think that's, it's a big tourism, I mean, most of, I had a long conversation with the mayor of Fairfield Bay, and Fairfield Bay is similar to Cherokee Village in that it's a, you know, the community size-wise and the way it's established, and we made, passed an ordinance allowing the operation of UTVs, which sets forth regulations that they have to follow in order to, in order to operate them, but he said after they done that, he said it was a very large boost in their tourist industry, he said they have a very, he said it was a very, he said it saved their town, and he said it helped them out quite a bit, so it's something I'd like to look at, and maybe we can see about doing something senior in it. You know, I know everybody knows, they have, you know, they operate the UTVs on the highways anyway, but this would actually, something to this, like they passed for the county, would set regulations that they have to have in place to be able to operate the UTVs that we can enforce, and they would have an enforcement side that the police department could actually enforce if they're not following the regulations. Well, there was something else too, wasn't there, Penny? And the new computers are all up and running, we finally got them up, had a little hiccup with them, but we finally got all our new computers up and running, we're, we have to decide what to do with the old ones, whether we're going to, whether we'll raise them and try to surplus them or destroy them. Right now, we're using a couple of them just for memories and use for memory. One of the things they told us is that our server is a 2016 model, thanks for this, 2012 or 2016 model, we need to really look at updating our server for next year. Laser fence, you said, Ms. Penny, you said you talked to them today, they're having a class next week?
My class, it's still beginning this Wednesday and it's next Wednesday to start the installation and what we need to do.
Okay. Well, it's, am I leaving something out?
Fire hoses.
Oh, red date on the fire hoses, there we go, I knew I was leaving something out. Right now, as of an update yesterday that I got, the Sharp County Title is doing the title search to get the warranty deeds, they have all the paperwork, they're doing the research, is, and I believe what she told me yesterday is Onaga is done, the Onaga Fire Station property is done, Wakita Fire Station property is done, they're working on the Base Heart Fire Station property, but as we know, we always have to have hiccups in what goes on. Unbeknownst to a lot of people, and we had it surveyed, and I actually never knew this, but when we had the survey company survey the three properties, the road in front of, you know, what we know as Base Heart Road, the access road to the fire station and to the SIB campground is actually American Land Company property. So I've been dealing, I've been conversing back and forth with Mr. Rhodes at American Land Company, I said the city has been maintaining it because everybody thought it was a city street because we've always maintained it to the fire stations, and that, to see if he can get me some paperwork to where they, that we grant to us, deed us the road, or give us, give us a deed to the road to call it a city street so we can, basically made it an official city street where we have access to the fire station and actually the, access to the edge of the property at the entrance of the, to the SIB campground, which is, like I said, what the city's always been, we've been maintaining anyway because we believed it to be a city street. But, so I'm just waiting on a return email, I've, I've actually sent a couple of emails and I haven't got a return yet, so. And then, as soon as that's, Ms. Christie at the Sharp County Title said that that was kind of one of the, that would be a, she said if we're going to get it, we need to do it, and it would be nice to do it while she's doing the title search to have it all done at once, so it's kind of, we're kind of on hold waiting on answer for that. But everything is going good. Michael Pickering Surveying, which is the county surveying, Michael Pickering is the county surveyor, he surveyed all three properties for $1,800, which I thought was a very, which is a very good deal. Me personally, when I tried to have my 40 acres surveyed, it was going to be $4,000, and he surveyed three separate properties for $1,800. So the survey's done, the title search is that, Sharp County Title, we're just waiting on a return about the road to make sure that we're going to have road access to the fire station and SIB can have road access to their campground.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Question, how long has Mr. Rhodes been, how long have you been waiting on the response? What was your initial inquiry to Mr. Rhodes about the Base Heart Road?
Tomorrow will be two weeks.
Okay.
I contacted him on Friday, almost two weeks ago. Any question on any of the department reports? Anything to add with the animal control, police department?
No, sir.
Cal's got a little thing to hit on with the fire department here in just a second, so I'm going to save him.
Yeah, I was going to recognize, my firemen are actually on their way, but they haven't got here just yet. Recognize.
Yes, yep, we got to recognize two of them, they completed their training.
They're at the end.
Okay.
Good with them.
Yeah, that'll be fine. So moving into old business, with the building and grounds, the building and grounds budget to hire a landscaper, the city inspector is doing the job question. After much discussion at the working meeting, what we had settled on, and I said, wouldn't blame Kurt maybe if I'm on, we're going to go off on tangent, but what we'd settled on is, let me get my calendar right, we're going to get a bid together to put out to the public, to ask for public bid for, and I know we call it landscaping, but it's the mowing of the city properties plus the landscaping, so it'd be mowing and landscaping, but we have it put out.
October?
Yeah, in September, we'll have it in the newspaper probably either the week of the 8th or the week of the 15th of September, then have the bids open at the regular city council meeting on the 16th of October, it'll be opened at 6:00 here in this room, we'll be soliciting for closed bids, or sealed bids, which we'll say that.
Mr. Mayor, another question on the landscaping, so last, this year, we had bids come in, do you know kind of the range that they came in when they were submitted this year?
They had quite a bit of range, like the lowest on the low end was about 25,000 to 26,000, all the way up to 52,000 was the highest.
Considering the multiple discussions and extended commentary on city budget, would this be considered a want and not a need? Because of the fact that, you know, Charlie has his assistant, which was supposed to be replacing, you know, the real need for a landscape, and it just, you know, it's an expense that, in light of the discussions we've had over police vehicles, the commentary that has been in terms of city budget and so forth, do we want to really go down this path again in terms of committing extra dollars? We've already committed extra dollars for a part-time person out at animal control, we've added a police vehicle. I would suggest we consider putting that down on a want and rather than need, I think it's an, an extra budget item that we may need to have these dollars expended within the other departments, primarily police, fire, and roads.
And also, I mean, like, when we get it ready, that's what, before the ad will go in the newspaper, I guess I need to, we need to talk about September the 18th, which is a regular meeting, before the ad goes in the newspaper for the soliciting of the bids, I want to bring it up here in front of the city council and get everybody's knowledge on it before it goes in the paper, but, and that's some, one of the things, you know, that was one of the several things that was heavily discussed in the meeting, is that, I mean, it's, it puts a lot of, it does put a lot of work on, you know, I know Charlie and Robert, it does put a lot of work on them, and it takes away from work they could be doing otherwise, but also, you know, to me, sometimes it's a half a dozen, one to six of another, because they're in need of a lawnmower and some lawn equipment, so we're going to have to spend lawnmower and lawn equipment, or you can lease it up, but then again, sometimes I'm not, the way I think, I know it's sometimes in my redneck thinking is, I hate to pay a contract company to do something that we can do, but to me, it's ultimately up to the decision of the city council, ma'am.
Cut, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was under the impression that we're getting the bids, so at least we can have a number for when we do the.
Budget.
The budget, and it'll be up to the council to decide whether we use it or not, so at least going out and getting bids is going to help us with budgeting, correct?
Well, if you want to sit there and have contractors spend the time to put together a budget, I mean, that's time and energy on their part, and.
Cal?
Cal?
Cal.
A gentleman here for you.
I can hear what he's saying.
But that's time and energy on the part of contractors to put together a bid, and, you know, I would say that that's all reasonable and everything if we do intend to spend the dollars.
Understood.
But if we're, if we're already budget challenged, which other members of this council have pointed out repeatedly in other discussions, why would we waste contractors' time when we're looking at additional areas that we can cut? I mean, you know, we've added and added, and yet, you know, the commentary comes along about, and I get it, you know, we would, if Charlie feels like his time is being disproportionately addressed to landscaping, but we just had, you know, a bad outcome in one of his efforts that took two years to get a property owner into court. When he got him into court, you know, the judge basically, you know, issued a harsh reprimand to the property owner, gave him five or four or five months to get their act together, went back into court with the assurance from the judge back in February that he was going to impose a hefty fine, he turns around and slapped the homeowner on the wrist and gave him more time.
Yeah.
Gave him another three months. So how much time is Charlie doing preparing, you know, citations and all the paperwork to go and get a property owner who's clearly out of compliance with city ordinances, only to go before a judge that doesn't carry it out? And if you look at the amount of time wasted versus Charlie putting his time into regular routine, you know, maintenance, I'm just wondering, you know, what, what are we arguing here?
Can I say some of the things we learned at our working meeting, and what we discussed was, and Charlie piped in and said a few things as well, and, you know, Charlie's wearing a lot of hats, he's wearing building inspector, he's wearing buildings and maintenance, code enforcement, and also having to mow the grass and mulch the beds and prune the bushes and everything else, and so we felt like his department could be, he could focus on everything but the lawn and the landscaping, sub that out to a company that does that for a living, and that way Charlie could utilize his time, because he is, he's not doing it by himself, he pulls Robert off of court code enforcement duties to mow the grass and do the things, and they don't have the right equipment to make them cost-effective and time-efficient. I mean, they're using handheld blowers, they need a mower, and so there's an expense there, plus the expense of their hourly doing something like that, and we had talked to Charlie, and Charlie was agreeance in bidding out the lawn and landscape so that that comes off his plate, so that he can focus his department on code enforcement, building inspecting, and maintaining the buildings.
I didn't hear it that way that particular day, but if you say so, Charlie was saying that he'll deal with whatever he has to deal with, he wasn't in agreement that he needed it or didn't need it, he says whatever the council decides is what I heard.
Neither.
So, I mean, it's just something that's going to have, the council is going to have to decide on and do, so as far as this today is, I make a motion, we call for the question and get it off the table, because we don't need to be sitting here and talking about it for the next 20 minutes.
We agreed at the working meeting that we would move forward and get, and get bids and move forward, and Charlie, Charlie was in agree, I mean, Charlie was in agreeance to get a lawn and landscape as opposed to like, you know, he doesn't have the proper equipment, his, he's having problems with his knees, and it's, and it's, and it's a lot, I mean, you know, it's, can be 27 hours every couple of weeks, that's, that's a lot taken away from what's going on in the city that we need a planning and zoning department for.
So is there a motion, is there a motion on the floor at all?
Nope.
So then, I, I call for the, I call for the question that either we're going to vote on this or put it to bed?
I put a motion that we have a vote to submit bids for a lawn and landscape for 2026.
I'll second that.
In that point of order, if we're going to vote as a council, then I'm hearing two different versions of Charlie's comments from a working meeting, we need to have Charlie in here in front of all council members that are going to vote on something like this so that he can give us clarity in his commentary, because I'm hearing one thing from Councilman Martin, and I'm hearing something other in terms of recollection from, with all due respect, from Councilman Harrison, and I spoke personally with Charlie, and I heard something somewhat different than either one of those, so.
It is video.
You know, I think for clarity purposes, if we're going to vote to put something to move forward with the bid and take time of companies to bid, then I think Charlie needs to be here to be able to comment when called upon by all council members, if we're, because, not, you know, I apologize, I was out of state, you know, when the working meeting occurred on Monday, but Charlie needs to be here for something that we're going to sit, sit there and take a vote on in council, regardless, if he supports going forward with it, and that's his opinion, I trust him to run his department, and I'll vote accordingly. But if he's not here, and we have, we have discrepancies from council members as to what his comments were during the working meeting, now I would say get him here, and I would vote to table this until the next council meeting. If it's a contract for next year, it shouldn't make any difference whether we vote on it tonight in August or next month in September.
It's all video recorded, so we can watch it on YouTube.
Well, and I mean, can we get the, I mean, Mayor, you were at the working meeting, I felt like we all asked questions to each other and to Charlie, and, I mean, at the end of the day, you know, your opinion weighs heavy on how you want your department and if you want, I mean.
Well, motion on the floor, but it wasn't really a motion, but if you want to make a motion to move forward with the bidding process, that's up to the council.
That's what she made.
That's what, I know, the motion on the floor, the motion seconded to move forward with the bidding process, like I said before, we'll get the wording together, and then I'm going to bring it back here on September the 18th for the council to look at it before it goes in the newspaper, or goes online, and.
That works for me.
Mayor, may I, may I say something?
Yes.
This, I do not want this to come across as pointed as it may sound, I'm asking that everyone just hear what I'm saying in the spirit in which I'm saying it, but at the end of the day, the purpose of planning and zoning, that department's roles and responsibilities are very clearly laid out as to what their daily responsibilities are, and I appreciate the fact that as a council, we value Charlie's opinion, but at the same time, ultimately, it's not his decision to make as to whether or not he is cutting grass or if he is out on, in the community, doing the job of planning and zoning, that, that is a decision that is up to us. So while I appreciate doing that, I just want to be clear that we, we did come to a good understanding at the working meeting, and requesting, submitting for bids is not guaranteeing anything, it's not guaranteeing any expenditure of money, and I feel that we should move forward with that based on the conversations we had Monday.
In, in response to that, where'd you get your facts for that? Because he is the head of the department, so he is the department head, and he determines what he's going to do that day, or the mayor tells him, it's not our choice to tell him what to do, we are legislators, back to what Mr. Thompson said. So, so it is his choice. So, it is his choice what is most important for him to do at that particular moment in time, and he follows what it is. So, yes, it is his choice, nobody else's but his since he is the head of the department. So, I agree with the vote, one way or the other, and let's just get something done and do something.
We passed the ordinances that are very robust and are very specific as to what we are asking the citizens, how they're to keep their property and how they're to keep it maintained. And it being that we passed those ordinances, I want to make sure that we are giving the department that is enforcing those every opportunity to do so without a lot of conflict of interest.
But our first priority is safety for the public and not being a nuisance to every member of the society for... We've had enforcement people that ran out and literally put a gun to people and said, "You're gonna do this or you're gonna do that." And that has happened in the past.
Well, by then, by then, hold on a minute. Don't say they put a gun to the people.
He put his hand on his gun, and he threatened...
Well, that's not Charlie. That's not... That's not who he is now.
He's a person that is very empathetic and tries to get the problem solved rather than just get money for the city.
Right now, all the...
So, what's on the table is, are we gonna vote to get out of this thing yes or no?
Well, all we're voting for tonight is the way the mayor goes, yeah. So, put it to vote right now.
There we go. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Hey, we're gonna do it by roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Martin?
No.
Lo?
Yes.
Ishmael?
No.
Roland?
Yes.
Four to three.
It's not like asking businesses to give us bids on stuff without any... Without leaning one way or the other that we're gonna actually spend money and ask them to keep doing it.
I have a question about that real quick, though. I mean, a business that bids on a job takes that risk of not getting that job when they put in a bid.
Well, they do take that risk, but the fact is that we're asking them to bring bids in, and we've not even agreed if we're gonna expend any of the money.
Well, I mean, you kinda need to look at the bids to see what kind of money we're talking about.
I don't disagree. We've already asked them to do it once, and now we're asking them to do it again eight months later.
Well, I think the first time there was a problem in the bid process.
Well, I don't disagree.
Well, I mean, just say for 2025, we agreed in the budget to 25,000, which is gonna probably be your minimum bid. And there's no doubt you should be able to find a bid between 25 and $40,000. So, it's, you know, we've budgeted for like this...
I just thought the mayor was just gonna get the wording together to bring to us at the next meeting, and then we could request Charlie to be here to answer whatever questions council had. So, it was just moving the ball to the next step so we could get a solid answer from Charlie and how that department feels. Cause evidently something went wrong at the long working meeting that we had Monday to cover all this. And then we can make our decision that night. We weren't... This wasn't to vote to move forward on actually requesting bids. It was just allowing the mayor to get the wording together for the bid process and have Charlie here to answer questions, but...
All righty, moving on to new business number one. Act 505 dealing with public meetings. During the 2025 legislative session and going to affect August 5th, 2025, that was one of the things I was just, you know, told you about last minute. Act 505 amended the Freedom of Information Act's open public meeting statute in significant ways. This requirement misses for any municipality maintains a website or social media page to publish the time, place, date, and the most current agenda for a public meeting online at least three days before a regular public meeting and at least two hours before an emergency or special public meeting. And that was one of the things that was... And then there was something I upgraded, Miss Beanee.
When council set up the protocol, the resolution to handle how council minutes or announcement need to be made, it actually comes to the Friday before, which is six days. So, Misty and I have gone over this, and we're asking you to keep in mind or make it that, give us the six or seven days because we have to be able to publish it. One of us is not always here, and we may be busy doing something that you don't get it done if you get it in three days. It also takes time when we put it on Facebook, when we put it out there for people to see, and then it gets shared. Cal just found out because he needed to run something for a grant, and they came back and asked to do it this way because of what the newspaper cost. So, this is how we need to do that. Just make sure that you give us time and make sure you give us the date and the agenda so that we can get the stuff published. The two days is gonna be very tough to get it done and get it out. We are getting more people to show up at our meetings because they know about them.
I believe what you're just seeing is what the state requirement is. We have a requirement which is what it currently is for you. And if there's anything last minute happening, that's what that applies to. So, it's... You shouldn't have to change anything for it. It's just last minute things.
Correct, we don't need to change it, but we're just trying to make it so that everybody knows it's now a publicly record that please give us time.
Understood, thank you.
Number two is Act 929. It's the .gov domain. We're working on that. The state passed a law that requires us to go to a .gov by June of 2026. So, we're just being proactive and trying to get it done, you know, dealing with the government. You know, things take time, you know, so we don't wanna be... Don't wanna wait to the last minute. So, hopefully, hopefully, we'll know something probably in another month, month and a half, they should have everything switched, which will be all city emails, anything to do with... Any city emails has to go to .gov, the city web, you know, city email, city webpage, everything goes to a .gov, just more secure. Mr. Fire Chief, business number three is you. Do you wanna do your recognition now?
Yeah. So, uh...
Now, you're getting to come up?
I recognize these two fellows. Beginning of this year, they each attended Arkansas Fire Academy. Both passed with flying colors. Our academy is about 11 weeks. You spend about 48 hours medical training, 40 hours on hazmat, and then like 320 on firefighting training. And then we send them for an additional 20 hours, or 20 hours, additional 80 hours, two weeks, driver-operator training. Cause in Cherokee, these guys are driving and operating as a matter of fact. So, I just wanted to recognize, Koi was hired on July last year, and Jeff was hired October last year. So, they just now got through for the first part of this year. I would've recognized him sooner, but I was out due to medical reasons. So, figured it's appropriate to do it now, so.
Thank you, Fire Chief.
And then the other thing I've got there on the agenda is a grant application. This is something that's come up. This is a grant that previously we've never been eligible for, or so we thought. I've been working with Ms. Carey down at White River Planning and Development in Batesville. And if you don't know, they're our area... They help with grants, they help with USDA in certain areas, businesses and whatnot. But anyway, they're a free service for cities and stuff to help with grants. They'll do all the grant writing. She figured out that we are eligible for a $100,000 block grant. The fire department is applying as a township rather than a city. So, we're gonna do that. This grant is due in October. But there's a lot of little things we have to do prior to that. Uh, we have to have a hold a public hearing, which we're planning on doing it like the 30 minutes prior to the next council meeting. There is a cost to the grant, but White River Plan... The grant requires a paid administrator. White River Planning and Development is who will be that paid administrator. That's how they support themselves. But that comes right off the top of the grant. The city's part is $10,000. So, I think, if I remember correctly, I think the part they get paid is eight. So, it's like 82,000 free money we'll get for the $10,000 investment. There's some other things we'll have to do. I'll have to get with the girls up front. We gotta have a separate bank account to administer this money. They also don't... They don't just pay us the money. We have to spend it, then make a draw to reimburse us for everything we spend as it goes. The plans for the grant as of right now, and I'm putting everything together for quotes, is buying another used small apparatus like the new one we purchased. Omega just has an engine in it. ISO would like us to have a service truck at all three stations to maximize our ISO points. So, that's what I'm trying to do. Plus, for the bulk of the calls we do, medical calls, service calls, it's a lot cheaper to operate that smaller truck than it is that fire engine, especially as old as they're getting. So, that's what I'm coming here to do to make or hope that all y'all are behind that. We will probably have to do a resolution as well at that meeting following the public hearing. I haven't even read all the little details on the resolution part, but that's pretty typical. But they do all the running around. Usually you have to have a letter from your state rep, your senator, all that stuff. And also, if we are not awarded, they will recycle this application next round and apply again, so.
So, you need a vote of support?
Do what?
Do you need a vote of support?
No. I just wanted to bring it to your attention, being all this is gonna happen in like the public hearing court just prior to the next meeting. I didn't want y'all to be unaware of what we're working on and doing, so.
Next month, maybe September in the September meeting?
Yes. Yes. And we'll make public announces for that, public hearing and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, that'd be a good deal. It's a very little investment for a big return.
Yes, for sure. Well, I'm just excited that we found a grant that we can actually apply for. Usually we're out of the running due to the low to moderate income levels of Cherokee Village, but applying as a township, we qualify, so. And she even called the state to confer, the state's who awards the grant, to confer that all those calculations were correct and for sure we are eligible, so.
Good job, Chief.
They did good work, don't they? Those are nice, they're good people.
All right.
All righty, number four is a special use permit, 2025-13. The Cherokee Village Fire Department failed to boot for muscular dystrophy, which will be held Saturday, August 30th between hours of 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m.
I make a motion, we accept the special use permit?
Yes, we'll be out handling. We will have people set up here at this intersection by the new bridge. We will have a table set up at Arrow Lake View. And typically have a table set up at Casey. What would then get about that if they hold in their support here for that?
All righty.
And we'll need to do it that morning.
I made a motion to accept the special use permit?
Motion by Mr. Martin?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ishmael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes, thank you. Now, here's the... All righty, here's our ordinance back at the... Was it the first of this year or the end of last year when we passed the resolution to allow the city to do electronic fund exchanges where we could pay bills online? We were running into this problem when we did it with the mayor not being very expedient in getting some late charges. So, we... Some of our recurring payments, we changed them to do electronic payments to so we would not have to pay late fees. And then our new, the new state auditor that started at the first of this year, we passed it as a resolution last year with... That's what the auditor said we had to do. Well, the new state auditor that came in this year said resolution wasn't what it was supposed to be. It was supposed to be an ordinance. So, basically, we're passing the same resolution into an ordinance with providing steps that has to be followed just as per if it's a check. I mean, it has to have a PO, it has to have a signed PO, it has to have two signatures, and then, you know, two signatures on the check. So, it's, uh, so it'll have the same stringent, you know, protocols as just as writing a check.
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive... Oh, you got the thing here for me to read?
I got the cheat sheet. The John, thank you, John April.
The motion is to waive the three readings of the ordinance and suspend the rules and waive the requirement that an ordinance be read three times at three different days for consideration of ordinance 2025-1 dealing with the Electronic Fund Payment System, EFT, and the ordinance be brought for a final passage by the council without necessity of reading the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Roll call vote, please.
We do need to read it by title?
Read, okay, read by title.
Well, not until we accept waiving the rules. We gotta waive the rules first.
You seconded?
Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All righty.
Now, we do the motion, we do the ordinance itself, the title only?
Yes, but we, uh...
Do you want me to read the title only?
One of these, gotta make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept ordinance number 2025 and ordinance establishing an electronic funds payment system for Cherokee Village, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Thompson to pass ordinance number 2025-01. Roll call vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I make a motion that we accept the emergency... Oh, you want me to do that?
You gotta say, you gotta call it up for final passage.
We just... I thought we just did the whole thing in one thing.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
So, we...
We didn't have to vote on it three times, we said we're gonna all do it.
You had to call it up for final passage and then pass the emergency clause?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You had to...
Did we have to bring it up again for final... We just voted on it, now you didn't? Okay, so, I was gonna bring up the emergency clause and usually if there has to be a final passage, so it's like another reading, I thought.
Oh, is it a separate thing?
Yeah, we passed the ordinance, now we have to pass the emergency clause. So, it's two separate things.
So, the emergency clause, I make a motion that we implement the emergency clause.
Second.
You want me to... "The administration of the city and the city council of the city of Cherokee Village, Arkansas, recognizes and declares an emergency to exist, and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, comfort, convenience, moral, safety, and welfare of the city of Cherokee Village, Arkansas shall be in full force and effective immediately upon acceptance of this ordinance."
Okay. Motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Thompson to pass the emergency clause on ordinance number 2025-01. Roll call vote, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Lo?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And I appreciate that on the emergency clause. That's something I don't take lightly, and I don't... We don't do it unless it's necessary, unless it's actually something that we use, I wouldn't say on a daily basis, but it's used on a weekly basis for sure.
But we technically already passed it.
Yeah, we're just reaffirming something that's already passed. All right, new business number six was the street department trucks. We had entered one of the two council meetings ago when we voted to pass, or voted to buy the used truck for the street department. One of the things was we was gonna sell some surplus, some equipment, surplus and vehicles. You have in your pockets, you have in your pockets the surplus equipment. There's five pickup trucks, and I can tell you that at least two of them are non-running condition. I know the two old Chevys, the '86 and '85 Chevrolet, and the little miniature truck. I don't even know what it is, it's what brand it is, but the little miniature truck, it's in a non... truck, it, it's in a non-running condition. Uh, I was gonna, um, I'm asking to certainly declare them surplus, and what I'm gonna, gonna try to do is I'll make contact with the guy from the Wicker Auction Service that does the online auction, they do a government auction every fall, I know it's in September, I don't know if it's past the date to where I can get it into the government auction, uh, what they do, but if it's past that date, you know, the Cherrys, Marcus Cherrys has a local auction at Glinko, and we're just taking to an open auction, and surplus them, I don't, my, my question is, is that, do we wanna assess any value to them other than scrap, I know, I know three of them would be scrap value, but...
I would suggest you submit them to auction with no reserve.
I mean, it'd be less heavy, I know, I said, I know three of these are, no, no just scrap value.
I second his motion.
Oh, motion by Mr. Thompson to, to accept, to declare the five vehicles surplus and assess the scrap value to them, uh, seconded by Mr. Martin, roll call, vote please.
Lo?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Rachel Tatum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Passed.
All righty, any, uh, now we're down to public comments, any public comments, your concerns, your questions on city-related business? Any from the council? I entertain a motion.
One thing, council, I'll be emailing you, we just got notification about winter conference, so I'll email you the details, uh, dates, times, whatever.
Is it coming out of the city's department, is that coming out of the end?
The registration, yes, come, you know, city pays registration.
And they pay for it, right? Do we do anything with it in the city, 'cause it didn't, it didn't remote?
And whether the municipality does it, do, whether you're in person, whether you're in person, or whether you do it remote, it costs the same money?
Just, just the...
Just your registration. It, it's the same money whether you're there, or...
Okay, if it would be worth doing something.
Oh, and if you would like, there's a, you know, you can do that after city business.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion by Mr. Martin, seconded by Mr. Ishmael, do adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, light sign, motion passes, I wanna thank everybody, thank the council.